She said she was traveling.
Six o'clock, call and meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As customary, we'll observe a moment of silence. I'd announce this meeting is being recorded and televised by local cable. I'd seek a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Seek a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we did have a piece come into the read file that I'd like to read publicly. Dear Honorable Board, almost 20 years ago, I was asked by the Board of Selectmen to see if my Winterfest Committee and I would undertake the project of replacing the condemned playground in the lower park. Of course, we accepted the challenge and spent the next two years raising the 125,000 needed, using no town funds, to design and build the beautiful playground that was dedicated May of 2004. Today, for the first time in many years, I had the opportunity to go to the playground, the first visit for my granddaughter. It gives me a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to see how well the playground has been maintained and improved. I simply want to say thank you to the employees of the DPW for their care and professionalism in keeping the playground in great condition it is for the use of so many. Sincerely, Mr. Richard Rosen. I would echo his statements that our DPW does a fantastic job with the playground. Next up will be public forum, if anyone would like to speak of something that's not on the agenda.
Please excuse me if I tend to look down a lot. I tend to get nervous when I'm speaking publicly, and also I'm terrible at memorization. So anyways, my name's Ken Layla from Auburn Street in Whitman. I'm here to thank the Selectmen for the tribute to my wife back on, Marie Layla, back on December 13th at your Selectmen's meeting. I also want to make special thank you to Fire Chief Tim Clancy for his little story about my wife. Quickly to let you folks know, my wife started out in EMS. She was an EMT before she became a nurse. She worked at South Shore Hospital in the emergency department, and then moved on within South Shore Hospital to be an instructor for EMTs as Fire Chief. Tim Clancy can attest to that. He was one of her students. Basically why I'm here this evening? I wanted to ask the Selectmen, Historical Commission, Historical Cultural Society, the Historical Society, and even the people of Whitman to help find a way to recognize Marie's vision and establish a historical museum. Her passion was with the history of this town, in case nobody knew. And I think, Randy, you mentioned it back some time ago, back on the December meeting, if I can, if that's correct. But anyways, her passion was with the old buildings, the research and surveys, to place things on National Registry, to refurbishing the old cemetery stones in Mount Zion. Excuse me, my tongue is tied. Mount Zion Cemetery, refurbishing those old cemetery stones. And even, in case anyone didn't know, she was instrumental in the restoration of the Toll House sign at Wendy's, in case nobody knew that it was missing for a period of time. That's just to name a few. If my memory's correct, she had already requested and submitted grants to fund the historical museum and cemetery projects. She last voiced her opinion to the museum at the Selectmen's meeting October 25th, which was some three months ago. Unfortunately, I don't know the outcome of any of that at present time. Just so that you're aware, I have no knowledge or background relating to anything historical in this town. I'm sorry to say, I was not involved with any of her passion of history. But I'm here, willing to assist and fulfill her vision, but I will need guidance. So I'm available if anybody wishes to ask questions or promote anything or suggest any ideas. Marie was always low-key, enjoyed what she was doing, and never wanting recognition for anything. Tonight, I ask all to try to fulfill her dream, no matter your qualifications. Any and all help would be appreciated. The one thing I'll ask of the Selectmen, once the museum becomes a reality, I'd ask the Selectmen to name it in the honor of my wife as the Marie E. Layla Historical Museum. Maybe the town can find a way to move forward on her behalf and make the museum a reality. Let's let Marie's dream live on in this town, please. Thank you for your support, understanding me in time.
Marie was absolutely an asset to our community. Thank you for coming up, Ken. Okay, approval of meeting minutes, open session, December 20th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Tonight, we have a scheduled joint meeting with the Finance Committee to budget an introductory presentation for FY '24 and a discussion. I'm gonna just ask for a little leniency for one moment and take one thing out of order, so the assessor can get back downstairs.
Thanks so much, I appreciate that. Can I assume that the board is familiar with the memorandum dated December 29th sent by Frank to you folks regarding the reclassification? Great, so as far as, I'm then not here so much to plead the case because I think it was done nicely in the memorandum, I would just like to make one maybe adjustment to the request that Frank has made. In his request, he wanted to make it effective if the board were, you know, amenable to it to, from January 1st, 2023. I'd like to amend that and ask the board to consider, if they were to do so, to make that effective July 1st of 2022, which was the beginning of the fiscal year. The original request dated by the Board of Assessors and sent up to the Town Administrator at the time was back in June.
Frank, do you want to add anything?
Well, I looked at it from the viewpoint of typically we move forward when we make a request for reclassification. In this instance, the assessor pointed out to me that the request was submitted via email and hard copy to our office in June. At that time, I believe the argument would have been, we've just negotiated a contract and we don't want to get into midpoint bargaining. But I don't believe the contract was settled at that point either. I've looked at the budget. The budget can support the change, particularly with the transition from joint retiring to the new employees starting. So it's not so much a budgetary issue. It's just a question of protocol. Do we typically backdate? No, in this particular instance, if the board's going to consider it, it could have been considered in a previous one.
Okay, and just so to make everyone aware, what we're doing is considering reclassifying an assessor clerical position from Level 1 to Level 2. Mrs. Alboochi.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Would I abstain a motion to reclassify the assessor clerical position from Level 1 to Level 2 with the beginning date of July 1, backdating to July 1, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. It will require that we negotiate, reach out to the union and negotiate that change.
Thank you for your vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will start the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, on behalf of the full committee, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing us to meet jointly at this point in the budget process. I think it's very helpful. I'm gonna be very brief because what I want to do is get a little bit more detail from some of the specific policy decisions that the Finance Committee entertained with the Policy Subcommittee over the past summer. So I'm gonna ask Leslie Diorio to give a little bit more information. We have a slide on the presentation for that. So to start out, I'd really like to recognize members of both the Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the work that has been done. You know, I believe that not only have many members of both boards embraced the new strategic plan, but gone so far as to implement some immediate procedures that get us out of the gate a lot faster than I had envisioned. So what I want to do is, like I said, turn it over to Leslie to walk through some of the details. But first thing, I'd like to, everyone in the room, to kind of know the challenges we're facing here as we roll out the initial Article 2 and talk a little bit about the budget for fiscal '24. As you know, the Finance Committee has started meeting with the budget managers from all departments and will meet later tonight with the Building Commissioner and the Board of Assessors. The Committee believes that there needs to be some difficult decisions made by all of our stakeholders to ensure our taxpayers are going to be able to afford to continue to live in this community. So we have the tools, and I really like to see us put them to work. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Leslie. If you could slide the mic over, Leslie, if you want to talk a little bit about some of the specifics of the Policy Subcommittee.
Sure, so we began meeting this summer to talk through some of the challenges that we faced over the past year during the Finance Committee budget meetings. And one of the things that we talked about were that some of the line items were rolled up as something like a miscellaneous category, which didn't give us a lot of transparency into what the various line items meant. So what we, this Subcommittee, which consisted of myself, Rosemary Conley, and John Noon, came up with was a mirroring of the format that the various groups use today. But what it also did was create an additional column that would pop up with a comment such as, "Please provide additional documentation", and another tab that would tell you what that documentation was. So for instance, if it was a personnel change and it gave you an increase over 5%, we would ask that they provide documentation on that. So if the unions are recommending 2.5% and you're going to exceed 5%, why exactly? So to ask the groups for that kind of transparency, since that was the type of thing that drove conversations in FinCom that would keep us there until 10 o'clock at night and tended to drive conversations at town meeting that would keep us there until 11 o'clock at night. And I don't think anybody wanted that. So it would really help the group to have collaborative discussions. So we came up with this format, and the intent was that this go out to the groups early so that they could help prepare their budgets. Unfortunately, it didn't get out quite early enough to the groups since we didn't see that format happen. But what we are seeing is that the ones that are seeing it, such as, you know, since I had it in my hands, I reached back out to the assessors group and IT to say, you know, "We have this format and we'd love to, you know, talk about, we'll help you put it in place so that we can have these discussions." They are appreciating it. So, you know, not meant to add any additional work to their plate, but really help build transparency at FinCom. You know, since it's in the same format that they're using today, really should be a cut and paste job. Did anybody want to add anything to that, or?
Anybody? So like I said, these are some procedures that have been implemented. And again, it's just kind of rolling out, and we really are really optimistic that it's gonna kind of catch hold and be part of the program for the next budget cycle. But, you know, as we go through budget meetings with the budget managers for this fiscal cycle, we are gonna talk a little bit about the benefits. And in meeting with several departments, we already have recognized that this procedure actually helps the budget manager see some trends and see where, you know, there is additional money that it can be easily explained if we have all the tools. And I think this is a valuable tool for us. So I really like to thank members of the Budget, the Policy Subcommittee, and also the Budget Subcommittee, too, did some good work at the beginning of the fall to get us to this point as well. So that's about it for me.
Sure, thank you. I was really impressed by the work that you guys did. I really like the format, and I feel like it's organized, and certainly helps me understand the budget presentations, you know, because of the organization and the transparency that you talked about. I will be curious to get, to hear some feedback from the department heads to see, you know, is this something that is adding too much work? Or is it a burden? Or are there tweaks to it? You know, so maybe it's good to have a year of just some discussion and some feedback. Also, a new town administrator coming in. You know, I'm sure that person would like to have some feedback about this. So I really appreciate the efforts, and I think it's really gonna help us in the long run. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And, you know, at the end of the day, the intent isn't to add the work. It was really work that they were already doing. So, you know, for example, a lot of discussions at the end of last year around the Police Department's budget, where we started to really look at the different line items around overtime and staffing shifts. So it was work that they were already doing when they had to come back and bring that material to the table. The idea was, we don't want you to have to come back. We want you to, you know, right out of the gate, bring this material to the table. So the questions are kind of answered preemptively. But if the groups do ultimately say, you know, "This is a lot of additional work where it shouldn't be because it's the same work that they're doing, it's just, you know, broken out the line items", we want to hear that, too, so that we can make adjustments to the process.
Mr. Lohman?
I saw the document when I attended the last Finance Committee meeting. That's when I realized that there was something different than what Ken and I had understood to be the budget process this year. It was kind of a miscue because they thought we had received it and we hadn't. So it really is a simplification process. It provides some thought as to why things are being done. For example, if someone is retiring, you may see a change in the line item. You may see a temporary increase for coverage. All of those things are practical needs, but they're best addressed if we know upfront that that's what they're looking for. It saves a lot of discussion. And I think it's, I think it's a really good idea.
Do you want to proceed, Frank?
Well, the Finance Committee is here to talk about a budget plan. So I borrowed some of the format from what was presented last year in order to prepare kind of an outline of what we should be looking at. The effect of development of budget is, of course, time-dependent. Everything is timely. We're gonna talk about a budget tonight, but it really isn't a budget. It's just a whole bunch of numbers put on spreadsheets and sent in and saying, "What do you think?". And when we get to page 5, you'll know what we think is, it's not gonna work the way it's come in. So this is the timeline with one minor adjustment that was presented last year. The timeline works. It gives us time to submit, prepare, review, and modify budgets. Certainly with sufficient time to actually put that information out to the public so that we hopefully will have a informed town meeting. The budget goals that were identified there were utilizing recommendations from Madden Consulting, following the strategic plan, and following financial management policies. Those are important steps to making sure that we're doing the best we can to develop a well-thought-out and well-presented budget. The notes are, we want to define what the impact is to the people who actually pay the bills, our taxpayers, and try to manage a system that gives us predictability and doesn't overburden the average taxpayer. As far as highlighting decisions for policymakers, we're responsible, the Board of Selectmen is responsible for setting policy for the town. As the Executive Board, they provide direction and guidance to all of the departments. The Finance Committee, in its role as an advisory board, reviews and makes recommendations on those decisions. Notably, when we go to town meeting, it's the Finance Committee recommendation that's read, which gives some insight as to the importance we place on their evaluation of the process. And I will say, as a former, long time ago, Finance Committee member, and as someone who's sat through a number of late-night meetings, there's no question how much work they do to try and get this budget reviewed, identified, and presented. And it's always been a team practice. I put together an outline of what we're looking at today, based on what came in. I want to emphasize, this is not the budget that we're going to present and ask people to vote, but this is the starting point. And these numbers aren't actually accurate either. We're gonna find out about the school assessment on Thursday, or at least the introductory one. The levy limit defines how far we need to go. And I'll show you that in this next slide. And I'll see if I can make this a little bigger. Oops. Come on. I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, everybody can see it, yeah.
And we start from the top. The, do I have the right slide here?
The levy limit?
It should say, it should say 24. I didn't change the date. But the levy limit calculations are there. We start with $30,688,000. We had our debt exclusions. We identify the maximum levy. This does not include enterprise funds, which are a completely separate account. We have estimates for charity receipts, but we really don't know what to base them on. They're not out yet. That's why I'm saying this is very preliminary. We have estimated receipts, and we estimate total revenue of $40,699,000. Then there are adjustments to revenue, which bring us down to $40 million. That number doesn't add up, and I don't know why. This is embarrassing. Total projected budget is $41,522,000, and the shortfall would be $1,367,000 if we work with these numbers today. We also mentioned impact to the taxpayer, and this is something that appeared in last year's graph as well. And interestingly enough, we've had some peaks, but we really haven't experienced system shock in terms of tax increases. That numbers that are there represent the difference in the single-family tax bill from one year to the next. We actually did have one year where it went down. Last year, the average single-family tax bill went up $110. That is affected by a number of things. It's affected by growth because the more value we bring into the equation, the more spread out the impact of the assessments are. So as property values increase and as new assessment, new property comes online, that tends to negate or to mediate, remediate the amount of money that's increased from year to year. And all in all, I don't think it's, I don't think that presents a bad picture for us. I think it says we've done pretty well over the last 10 years. Obviously, as we take on bigger projects and do more things, that picture's going to change. We do have a couple of projects that are pending right now. One is a DPW building, and the big project is the middle school. Those will have a significant impact on what we ask the taxpayers to pay. But it's all part of maintaining and growing our community. I think we have a lot of work to do over the next two months, and I'm confident that if we put our heads together and work with everyone, we'll come out with a solution that works.
Thanks, Frank, I appreciate that, we all do.
I'll have to look at that number.
Also, as we all know, we have a meeting Thursday night with the school district. A couple of years ago, this board took a vote to set financial policy off Madden recommendations. I think one of the big takeaways, hopefully, out of this meeting tonight is some type of unified consensus of what the town's message is gonna be to the school district.
Frank, I would like to take a look at that when he's done speaking. Sir.
Come away with some type of unified benchmark where we can at least give a solid answer of where we are expecting to provide funding and what possibly would have to be sought by other means, whether it be override or them also tailoring back their budget. Now, the Madden recommendation is up to 5%. I know we've, we've talked about it, and we are solid on our vote from a couple of years ago of up to a 5% assessment, not overall budget increase. I'd like to hear from the Finance Committee, your thoughts on it.
Kathleen is the liaison to the schools, perhaps, if you want to give a little insight, too.
Okay, so it's overwhelming to sort of dig into the $58 million budget, actually, it's a $60 million budget proposal for next year. So I spent a considerable amount of time this weekend trying to figure out where are the increases. And I'm not gonna take the superintendent's, you know, thunder away from him, but there are three major reasons why increases have been requested, and he'll have to do the explaining on Thursday. But I was taken, my breath has been taken away not just by the school requests, but by some of the budget requests we've received from town side departments. So I think if there's a budget message to be sent to everyone, both school and non-school, is that the Madden report is the guiding principle to what is a 2% or 2.5% for a non-school from Madden.
2.5.
2.5, all right. And then the 5% for the schools.
Up to 5%.
Yep, up to 5%, I agree. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and when the schools actually vote. I think it's February 1st, they vote the budget. I know that they're waiting on the governor's budget. That's gonna be delayed this year because of the new governor. But it's challenging, to say the least, to look at $60 million and figure out where is there any place that can be cut or where did the increases come from. So Thursday night will be interesting. Is it a 6:30 meeting?
Yes.
So buckle our seatbelts and go for a roller coaster ride.
And it is a posted meeting.
Yes.
All the Selectmen and Finance Committees. All right, Frank.
Could I ask what the budget mailing was to the town side budget managers? Because we've received budget increases or requests that are inconsistent. So different So different budget managers are submitting different requests. Some are 2%, some are 2.5%, some are significantly higher. Was there a cover letter that said, "Here are the guiding principles that you should be using when you put your budget together"?
I believe an outline went with it. Ken actually did the emailing. But typically, we strive to keep our budget growth under 2.5%. And everyone is aware of that. And that is a discipline that's exercised on the total budget. And there are, of course, occasions where an individual budget, due to certain circumstances, might require a greater increase. And it doesn't work to just take a calculator and go across the board and say, "This is your number." Because some services can't even be delivered with that, and others don't need it.
Yep.
So the budget preparation by the managers is their thoughts on what they feel they need to operate their department in fiscal '24. Some are aggressive. Some are just reality when we see what we have to deal with. And if we have to take on more in a particular area, we look to see if there's somewhere else we can ameliorate it by making downward adjustments. The reality is we have a municipal business to run, and we have services we have to deliver. And we have to take whatever steps are necessary and make sure that we are providing those services. So the choices for us are growth, budget control, and the big bad word, the override. If you get to a point where you simply cannot do it with your current revenue, then it's up to the taxpayers to say, "Yes, we want to do that," or "No, we don't." I'm a little surprised myself at some of the numbers I saw on the worksheet.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that in this phase of the budget process, too, we're, as a Finance Committee, more in a listening mode. I mean, even with the meeting on Thursday with the district. It's not that we certainly don't have questions, but out of respect for all departments, I think it's important that we focus on getting an idea of the challenges, the needs, the expectations, and the long-term goals of each department in this town before we even start to, you know, get hard into the numbers of the budget. As Frank said, the budget that was presented tonight is significantly preliminary. And I don't think we should overreact to the numbers as much as to focus on what the needs of each department and give them an opportunity to present.
How many departments have you met with, Rick?
We're about a third of the way through the process. So it's important to note, too, I just wanted to think back to the beginning of the slide presentation when the date for the budget rollout was February 1st of last year. That created quite a lot of difficulty for this committee. A month is a huge amount of time not to begin the budget manager meetings. We were meeting Tuesdays and Thursdays in April last year just to catch up. And we also didn't have the opportunity to meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen before town meeting. That goes a long way. And we appreciate the collaboration, right up to the day of town meeting, to allow us to collectively make decisions on this budget before we make recommendations to town meeting, so.
And I do thank Frank for his work. But as you know, we'll be having another person coming in soon.
Yep.
And we'll have to catch that person up to speed. So we're trying to move ahead as fast as we can, but also not getting so far down the road that the next person that comes in is playing a lot of catch-up. Mr. Kane.
I would like to speak for a second about the budget process, the annual budget process. For people watching at home, I did send a document to the Finance Committee and the Selectmen for them to reference. But this is from the Department of Local Services, where they have like a best-practice recommendation for the budget process and the timeline. You can see, if we look up at the slideshow, it's not... For us, it's been starting with the department had just submitted a request. So they just submit a request, and then the town administrator presents a balanced budget. And then we have to make some sort of difficult decisions about that. That process has caused a lot of tension over the years. The way that the Division of Local Service recommends that we do it is that we first look at the forecast. It says, "The most effective budget process follows a formal calendar that begins in the fall of each year with a revenue and expenditure projection, also known as a financial forecast." And then what they recommend that you do is a joint meeting of the Selectmen, Finance Committee, and the School Committee to review the revenue projections and reach consensus over expenditure levels, use of revenues, and allocation of resources generally. And then it says, "Distribute budget guidelines to department managers so that they can begin to prepare their appropriate requests." And in that way, you send out a budget message, Ms. Otina, that you were asking about, which is in line with your forecast and your projections. So then you're not asking for... I mean, I do agree that it's necessary for us to hear the needs and the challenges that the town faces, for sure. But to ask people to submit a budget without the limitations of a budget guideline based on the forecast, you're simply setting us up for failure and a whole lot of tension, because the schools are going to present a budget that they think are just in line with their best interests, but without any limitations, without any budgetary limitations. And each department head's going to do that, and you're going to continue to listen for the next month or so. And then we have this big gap, as opposed to coming together at the start of the process and then reaching consensus about what we believe we should do that's in line with the forecast. And then you send out the expectation. I think that change really is in line with our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, it specifically says that we will have a budget forecast. And I think, I really respectfully disagree with the way that we've chosen to run this year. I think there has been a change with the strategic plan. And I think having those budgetary guidelines earlier would certainly eliminate some tension.
Thank you, Sean. Duly noted. Anybody else?
Just to go back a little bit and follow up, Sean, you made some good points. The Finance Committee actually began the budget meetings with departments in December. So this is really last year's slide. We are taking steps to change the way we do the beginning of the budget process. And that goes back to, as Ms. Otina mentioned, about the budget mailing, to give some type of parameters for the budget managers to submit their budgets. We have done that in previous years, give them some ideas of what salary increases should be limited to and that type of thing, based on a budget forecast and revenue forecast. So do we need to do a better job? Absolutely. I'm 100% behind that. So whatever way we can get together to figure out best practices in that aspect, I think will be very helpful.
Anyone else? Mr. Kane.
I didn't mean to say that you need to do a better job. I just mean, like, we can, I think, paying attention to best practices and slowly making those steps for improvement over the, you know, the coming years, any way that we can eliminate conflict, I think, will be helpful. So I didn't mean to say, like, you should do this. I think we collectively need to think about how we can continue to look at best practices and implement those. Again, with the idea to eliminate conflict, that I think fall in line with the best practice is just going to make this streamline this process and make it more and more smooth and organized and transparent, so.
Mr. Evans.
I do appreciate getting this out to us now. I think, I kind of want to clarify, whose role is it going forward to present a balanced budget back to this board? Would it be the, I imagine, incoming town administrator?
Yes.
At some point soon? So we'll probably, like, the governor's budget be on a delay as we change personnel ourselves.
Absolutely.
That's good to know. The striking thing here is the total Article II increase, where we're looking at a request increase of about $2.8 million. And I don't know if, Mr. Kane, you remember your rough forecast for growth, but was it about $1.5 million?
A little bit less.
A little less than that. So we are, kind of like what Frank said through the presentation, we are greatly exceeding what our projected revenues are going to be.
And I think if history prevails, you always end up having the department heads taking that first shot of presenting their wants and their vision, no matter whether or not it happened the year that we, you know, fully rolled out the Madden 2.5 and the 5%. It was, when it came to the school district, I thought you meant 5% to the overall budget. Well, that's happened again this year. When it came to other departments that clearly knew it was 2.5 prior to going, you exceeded. So as far as wiping out tension from a budget process, there is always going to be some tension. There is always going to be each department head fighting for dollars for their own department, trying to fill their needs. It's never going to be a process that is just going to roll like a pool ball across the felt. There is always going to be people fighting for every dollar because we are... It's there. It's only, here's the pie. And it's you guys that, through your meetings, you help, you know, cut things down. And I was in that position, too. And it's definitely solid work. And I do think we've started the process earlier. Rick and I have had, you know, numerous discussions making sure this meeting happened early. And I appreciate the work. I have heard from even some department heads that, like, being able to roll out something like what you're doing, just an easier, you know, kind of eliminate the three-hour meeting. So I think the steps are there. And I think if you look at it, although it may not be exactly in line with DLS, we are hitting those steps. We know what our revenue is going to be, or a projection is going to be. But you're never going to stop a department head from saying, "This is what I want. This is my vision for my department." And I think in that first-pass budget, that's how they let everybody know, so.
If I may? Again, I've been in that... I was on the Finance Committee. I was chair for five years. I just need to let everybody know is that understandable, our school systems, whether it's Whitman-Hanson, South Shore-Vote Tech, Norfolk Aggie, they're the largest part of our budget, basically. They're the most, one that draws the most money and the most needs. The fact is, it takes all departments in this town, police, fire, DPW, recreation, whatever, to run this town. It's not all about schools, whether it's Whitman-Hanson or South Shore-Vote Tech. We have to rely on them to control their budgets and present it to the towns that are in their district. But it takes all the towns' departments that make the town of Whitman. And we can't make the police, fire, DPW, whatever, secondary. They have to be the same level, top of the line, all of us to run the town of Whitman. That's all I'm saying.
Anything else?
Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, that we do have a vacancy on our committee. And so I'd just like to put it out there in this format that we're looking for someone qualified. The sooner the better they can get on the committee in this part of the budget process. Obviously, it'll be better for them, and it'll be better representation for the taxpayers. And then, just because of the vacancy, we also would, and I know I mentioned this before, that we don't have representation on the Capitol Committee. So if the board so chooses, our recommendation as a committee is for Kathleen O'Tina to represent the Finance Committee on the Capitol Committee, where we have nobody at this time.
Okay. I would accept your recommendation, but we have to... It's going to have to be the next meeting.
Absolutely.
We have to rescind that appointment and then create the vacancies, so.
Thank you.
So just in closing, I'd like to say that, you know, this committee is diverse, and we really appreciate the diverse talents that everybody on this Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen bring to this process. So I think it's making a difference.
Who's missing tonight?
Al.
Al. It's a tough time for Al. He works late, so 6 o'clock start was difficult.
And for your, to fill your position, it's... I think they can apply on the website, but they also would reach out to the moderator, correct?
Right, that's a joint appointment by the moderator and the Board of Selectmen.
So either us or Mike Seeley, the moderator. Any interest?
Thank you so much.
Sean, could you...
Pretty first.
Okay, COVID-19 update.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again tonight. I just want to report, excuse me, the past week, the past two weeks, we've had slight increases. The first week was 28 cases. This week was 33 cases out of 351 tests we performed, which, based upon those numbers, gives us a 9.4 percentage, positivity percentage. Like I said, they've trended up over the last two weeks. That being said, it wasn't unexpected with the holiday gatherings. And we're going to continue to monitor that as the situation changes. I'm in close contact with the COVID-19 coordinator. There are some new variants out there. As we get more information, we'll keep the board informed. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Chairman's report. And I do, I think, have some slightly good news. Well, not slightly, tremendously good news.
You have someone else?
What was that? Chairman's report.
Sorry.
Frank reached out to a former employee, a great former employee who recently left us that absolutely, when you think about it, checks all the boxes we could possibly ask for for a town administrator. She's a proven employee. You know where her heart lies with the town of Whitman. And she's very interested in the position. Mary Beth Cotter, a former treasurer-collector. I had a conversation with myself and Frank. And Frank, if you want to add anything, but I would actually, I'd actually simplify it. I think her close-to-20-year employment record here, her track record, her knowledge of the budget, her knowledge of our town, her commitment to our town, makes her... If she was still working for us, I could just see this being just a...
A transfer of money.
Yeah. I don't want to say a lateral move, because it is a step up, but it makes sense. And, you know, with the struggle to find candidates right now, I would like to seek a motion to offer her, conditionally, based on negotiations, offer her the position of town administrator. I'd make that motion.
I will second it. Discussion, if I may. I think Mary Beth, she has... Her work ethics are unbelievable. You know, even, you know, she worked here on Fridays even though town hall was closed. She was here on Fridays. If needed to be, she was here on Saturdays. So her ethics to the town and to the job, you can't dispute. I mean, there's nobody better. All right? I think that if she accepts the job, I think then we look at her getting an assistant. But I'm wondering if the assistant that is needed would need to be more in tune to the job other than, can I mean?
I think we need to focus on...
Yeah, I think we're jumping ahead of ourselves when we start talking about the ATA.
No, I think she'd be outstanding.
Clearly, I've worked with Mary Beth ever since she started working for the town in 2005 or '06, no. Yeah, '05. She's an incredible employee. She's committed. She's smart. She can do anything. I mean, over the years, I've asked her to take on certain... I mean, over the years, I've asked her to take on certain tasks that would not routinely be the responsibility of a treasurer or collector, and without question, and I could count on all the boxes being checked. I did reach out to her. I was very frustrated with the results of our search. And it wasn't for lack of candidates, it was for lack of qualified candidates. And even when we had three to present, we lost one before we even came to the door. And at that point, we held off to try and assess whether this was the right way to go. I really made a leap calling, even calling her and saying, look, I know you just left, but let's talk. And it wasn't an easy decision for Mary Beth to make, because the same qualities that make her a good manager and a good leader are the ones that challenge her to say, wait a minute, I just took another job. You had to give it a lot of thought. And, and the, the end result, if she joins us, is we will be better off for it, she will be better off for it. And I'm sure she will do what she has to during her notice period to help Noel do what it needs to do to get a replacement. So I am confident that if you take this action, you're choosing the best possible candidate out there right now.
Yeah, I couldn't be happier. I couldn't think of a better candidate. I'm really, really excited that she was willing to, to come back and work for the town. I think it's exactly what we need, so I'm excited.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor to offer pending negotiations the job of town administrator to Ms. Mary Beth Cotter? All right. unanimous. Excellent. Okay, new business. Michelle Lamatina.
I don't know your name. Hey, boss. Come on.
Good evening. I am here tonight on behalf of the Whitman Recreation Commission. We are looking to, like we have in the past, look to have a few free events for our townspeople for the community. So we met last week, and we come up with a few ideas for, one event in February, one event in April. The first we're looking for approval for is Friday, February 24th, from approximately 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., a free family movie night in the town hall. And, you know, we, we'd like to expect everything the Rec. Commission Committee voted to cover the cost of, we'll figure out a family-friendly movie. We've done it in the summer in the park, and it's always been a big hit. And we would offer popcorn and just water for snacks for people to come in. So we would need to know if town hall would be available on Friday, February 24th, from 6:00 to 9:00. If not, we, you know, we could pick another date. That Friday is the end of school vacation.
I'll confirm, but I'm pretty sure it is.
Week, so we kind of thought the end of the week, because the Friday beginning the week, a lot of parents may take their kids away if they're off, because Monday's a holiday. But if that doesn't work, we could find another date. And the second event we were looking to use the town hall for would be Saturday, April 1st, from 9:00 to 1:00. And that would be for our egg hunt that we do indoors. We talked about maybe moving it outdoors, but I think with the weather, it's just easier. We get a maze from Busy Bee, what we've done in the past, and we kind of hide eggs in there, and we advertise it by grade, so the kids show up at different grade times. And the Easter bunny comes, and typically, we ask the library to help out with the event and provide a free craft. Or last year, we had crafts also. We wouldn't have any food or anything at the event. We usually have a balloon purse and, and the Easter bunny, so kind of basic, but we are hoping to be able to use the town hall on both of those events' dates.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion on both dates, if they're available.
Second.
So it's February 21st and April?
24th.
24th.
And April 1st.
April 1st. We have a motion, a second. All in favor of Rec. Do those.
Aye.
unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So Frank, will someone let me know?
We will.
If it's available, okay.
Michelle, on the free movie night, child, you know, children's movie, can you?
Well.
When you do it, put the age group, because I don't know if somebody has a three-year-old, four-year-old, you know, you may have it from six-year-olds to on.
Yeah, we'll probably just put the name of the movie out there, and then parents can decide whether they want. We try to, I can't remember what we did last year, we were talking about this, but we try to pick like the current Disney movie that come out on DVD that we think everybody would like. The outdoor ones went really well, so hopefully this might be something to bring some more people together.
I'll send over somebody to make a great Easter bunny.
We'll put the word out to the Easter bunny, too, first.
We'll put that on the next agenda.
Seeking an appointment.
Thank you.
Sorry. That's a great idea. I can't wait.
All right. Next on the agenda, act on the request for toll booth fundraises submitted by the following. The Whitman Area Toy Drive on September 9, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The American Legion Post 22, April 29, 2023, from 9:00 to 1:00. The rain date for that would be 5/6/23. The Knights of Columbus on October 7, 2023, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. And Whitman Little League, June 10, 2023, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Act on the request of Don Byers on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council for permission to use the town hall auditorium on Sunday, March 12, 2023, for a performance of "Great Day for the Irish."
Oh, so moved.
Let me tell you, who wants to second it?
Second.
There you go.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
All right, I'll say it.
Act on the request of Town Clerk Don Varley to appoint election workers for 2023 in accordance with the list provided, and to set the annual town election hours from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Take action to appoint Robert Kimball to the position of Associate Member, Board of Appeals, for the remainder of a two-year term through June 30, 2024, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review of this. Speak, Mr. Galvin. Did you have a hand up?
Yeah.
Oh. Next up, take action to appoint Brian LaPierre to the position of Member of the Conservation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30, 2025, in order to fill an existing vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Old business, Camp Alice Carlton.
You will recall that we, I asked the board for permission to explore what our options are for Camp Alice Carlton. I did receive a response from counsel. His opinion is that we are not bound to use the property in any particular way. The language in the original deed said there was to revert back to the town with the wish that it be preserved for park and recreation purposes. And I asked the question because we did receive a request from Select MA to consider allowing some of that property to be developed for soccer fields. The majority of the property, 25 acres of it, are in Rockland. About nine acres are in Whitman. The folks at soccer are very interested in developing some field opportunities out there. And I think it kind of follows in line with the thoughts for how the property would be used, not to be developed for housing or commercial entities, but for recreational and open space purposes. If the board is amenable, I would like to start a discussion with Select to find out specifically what they would like to do there, and then come back to report on their interest and figure out what the next steps would be, whether it would be a sale of some of the land, whether it would be a long-term lease. I remind you that we are currently paying the town of Rockland a payment in lieu of tax for having that property as open space. In Whitman, we don't even tax open space. It's always been a bit of a burnout for me. It still gives us significant area for, even if, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but even if for some crazy reason we sold part of the land and then gave the rest of the land to the town of Rockland to hold in as open space, we still have a sizable portion of land that's available to us in Whitman for recreational purposes. I'm also thinking in terms of if we do enter into some type of development agreement, that we have access for our youth to use the land in some appropriate way, whether it's fee-based or as part of any deal might be made. And there's a lot to be done with this, because even after we come up with an idea, we then have to do procurement, and we have to seek bids for anyone else who might be interested in doing this type of work. So it's not a foregone conclusion that we could reach an agreement with Select MA and, and just move forward. We then have to go through the other processes. I would guess that just, just the review part is going to take some time, but I'd like to begin that, if that's acceptable to the board.
Do you want to vote on that, Frank?
I think we should.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so the motion, just to clarify, is to allow the interim town administrator to enter into discussions with Select MA Soccer. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Just to confirm, any final decision about what to do with the line? We'll come back to this board before any bulldozing of vacant.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, there's, it's likely that we're going to be seeking some public input in this as well.
All right. Seeking no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, interim town administrator's report.
Let's see.
Copeland Fund, the grant to the animal.
We did, a couple of months ago, I found that we had been awarded a grant of $6,000 for animal control from the Copeland Foundation. The Copeland Foundation is the heirs to the Coca-Cola bottling company. They own the, the distribution rights for a lot of the country. And they created a foundation for support for animals, and they have been giving us money every year to put toward our costs to care for dogs and the cattle. The gift last year was presented to us along with the letter, and by last year, I mean sometime in May or June. I did find the letter, but I couldn't find the check. And after verifying that in fact we hadn't cashed it, I reached out to them and said, would you consider sending another? Well, fortunately, they did. So we have deposited with the approval of this board, $5,000, $6,000 donation to the animal control budget.
Do I need a motion?
We should.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion to accept the gift of the Copeland Foundation for animal control. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, at this time, we're going to be entering into executive, executive session pursuant to purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation in the, in the town of Whitman versus Edward Murphy, Plymouth Superior Court, docket number 2183 CV 000789. As open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating positions of the public body and the chair, so it declares.
I will make that motion.
All in favor?
Voice of the House. Yes.
Yes.
Now vote yes, and we'll only be coming out of executive session to adjourn. Thank you.